...to discuss facility fees for Collexico Unified School District. Again, today is October the 6th of 2016 and the purpose of this meeting is to invite public comment and your input as to what the school district should charge for the use of facilities.
Muy buenas tardes a todos y bienvenidos a esta reunión que es para escuchar sus comentarios y sugerencias sobre cuáles serían las nóminas adecuadas que el Distrito Escolar pudiera cobrar para el uso de sus instalaciones como los campos recreativos, la alberca, etc.
Thank you, and before we get started, I'm going to do some introductions. I'm May Rando, I'm the Assistant Supreme Canada Business Services here at the Collexico Unified School District. Here my wonderful interpreter and translator here is going to be Mrs. Maria Embry, Superintendent of Collexico Unified School District. I'd like to acknowledge our board members that are present, Ms. Norma Aguilar here on the front row and our Board President, Mr. Eric Ortega on the kind of back row back there. So welcome and again, welcome to everyone. By a show of hands, I'd like to find out kind of my audience in the room, our parents, if you're a parent.
Si es padre de familia en el Distrito Escolar, por favor, alcen la mano.
If you are like a league person, like a cheerleading type league or a football league, softball league or something like that.
Si vienen representación de una liga recreativa, por ejemplo, fútbol, voleibol, porristas, etc., por favor.
And I see the city of Collexico, I see Sandra and Parks are the Recreation Department there. So thank you and again, welcome to everyone. So thank you for coming. And if you notice, there are some computer stations by, just a few on each table. At the end of this, please come on in, come on in. At the end of this town hall, there's going to be a survey that I'd like for each and everyone to take. You can do it on your smartphone if you have one, but if you don't, there's a computer there where it's already ready to go where you can take the survey to put your information in there.
A la clausura de la junta, les vamos a pedir amablemente que, por favor, completen una encuesta sobre sus informes, sus datos, sugerencias y por eso es que tienen enfrente de ustedes en algunos lugares computadoras para que puedan hacer esa encuesta electrónicamente. Los pueden hacer también en sus teléfonos si es que traen teléfono con la capacidad de hacer la encuesta y si no, les facilitamos las computadoras para ese medio.
Okay, so a lot of the facilities that we have here and that are requested for rental or for use, they typically are sports facilities. So we have the football field, the softball field, we have some classrooms, the tennis court area, track, multipurpose room, our aquatic center, our gym, and football, softball, excuse me, softball, baseball, all of our fields. So these are just the type of facilities that you all request to rent and to use for your different sporting activities or just different groups for the facilities. So this is just an example of our facilities.
En esta gráfica tienen un ejemplar de las instalaciones disponibles por medio del Distrito Escolar de las que son las que nos solicita el público para el uso. Entre esas instalaciones se encuentra el campo deportivo Word que es donde juegan el fútbol americano y el balonpié, el campo de softball que igual que sería el campo de béisbol, los salones, las aulas, los salones de las escuelas, la cancha de tenis, el gimnasio para básquetbol, voleibol, el centro acuático, los salones de multiusos en nuestras diferentes escuelas y el... la track, la pista, la pista para correr. Que está bien para el campo Word.
Okay, so what we've done is we've taken a look at some of our neighboring districts to take a look at what they charge for the use of their facilities so that we could try to come up with something that was comparable, reasonable to charge the citizens or the community members of Collexico to use our facilities. Because as we know that, you know, there's always a fee associated with using our facilities to keep them clean, to keep them open, there's lights and just the general maintenance and ongoing repairs of the facilities. So we're going to look at Central Union High School District.
Lo que hemos hecho, hemos hecho un conjunto de lo que cobran los diferentes distritos escolares cercas a nosotros. Vamos a empezar con el de Central Union High School. ¿Por qué estamos viendo lo de una nómina, un cobro? Porque para utilizar nuestras, cualquier instalación que tenemos en el Distrito Escolar requiere de mantenimiento continuo, requiere de limpieza, de que esté todo sano y salvo, etc. Y todo eso obviamente requiere un costo para el Distrito Escolar y por lo tanto, lo que estamos haciendo aquí es presentarles a ustedes como comunidad de Callexico lo que otras comunidades cobran para hacer una comparación y para ver qué sería una nómina justa para nuestra comunidad.
So just click on that. Click, yeah, click on it. So it's bigger so we can see it. And in your packets, you have all of this information as well.
En sus paquetes tienen toda esta información. La primera es la hoja de Central Union High School District, aquí en el Centro CaliForn.
So if you take a look at Central's fee schedule, which ours is kind of, my recommended fee schedule is kind of modeled after this, you can see that it's done in different classes and each class is defined as to what you would qualify for. Class 1, 2, 3, 4, or, and then there's a separate breakout for just the field lights for the different sports. Also, they have a theater and it breaks it down again by the class and then what the fees that will be charged. So the class 1...
Cuando miramos, nos fijamos en la hoja de nómina del Centro, tenemos, ellos lo dividen en clasificaciones o en clases. Tienen desde la clase 1 hasta la clase 4 y aparte, ¿qué es lo que se cobraría por utilizar solamente las luces de los campos? Aparte tienen, ellos un teatro y tienen una nómina por separado para el uso del teatro.
For an example, for class 1, qualifying to be a class 1, which would have no charge for any use of the facilities, would of course be all of the like clubs of the school, your booster groups, your union groups, your ROTC and different clubs, district-sponsored clubs. So that would be a class 1, which is why there is no charge to that particular group.
En la primera columna tienen lo que es la clasificación número 1 para el Distrito Escolar del Centro que sería algo que quisiéramos implementar aquí. Que cualquier organización directamente afiliada con la escuela cae bajo la categoría o clasificación número 1. Cualquier club, organización, etc., que está afiliada directamente con la escuela estaría en esta clasificación y por lo tanto, no se les cobraría absolutamente nada. Por ejemplo, si sería el equipo de fútbol, el equipo de béisbol, el club de español, cualquier cosa que sería afiliado directamente con la escuela no recibiría ningún cobro porque ellos cairían bajo la clasificación número 1.
And in number 2, which is the community, an example would be, or a few examples would be your civic groups, nonprofit organizations, state tax-supported educational institutions and all of other sponsored type businesses or whatnot in the Central Union High School District or that are like of a nonprofit type.
Los que caerían bajo la clasificación número 2 que tendrían un cobro mínimo sería grupos de la comunidad. Por ejemplo, serían equipos de los niños más chicos pero que no están afiliados con la escuela.
I'm talking about sports organizations that are not within the school district.
Por ejemplo, las ligas de fútbol, las ligas de softball pero que no están afiliados directamente con la escuela. Puede que tengan nuestros alumnos participando pero no son afiliados directamente con las escuelas de Callexico o cualquier otro grupo que no es este lucro, que no es... No, they're not lucrative, o sea, no son lucrativos, no son grupos lucrativos. Así es que eso sería bajo la clasificación de comunidad, clasificación número 2.
Under class 2, you list 501(c)(3) non-profit groups. Some of the teams that we have, you know, like community teams, they operate as a nonprofit but they don't have the nonprofit standing. Would we require, or would those organizations, sports organizations be required to provide proof of being nonprofit? Or would they be considered within this classification without having to have the nonprofit?
I think due to the nature of what it is, knowing that they don't operate a league, a football league for the purpose of profit, it's more enrichment or what do you call it? Sports or athletic type. I think that the district, it would be at the district's discretion to decide how we're going to classify the charge depending on what they're doing. Because I'm going to talk about numbers. Oh, sorry. Want to translate?
Claro que sí. Mi pregunta es que si se identifica aquí a los grupos no lucrativos, mi pregunta es que si hay grupos de equipos de niños o adolescentes que operan como no lucrativos pero no tienen la documentación, que si se le va a cobrar o se le va a considerar así.
La respuesta es que eso ya sería al criterio del Distrito, a aceptar o no volarlos bajo el número 2 pero obviamente si, bueno, mi perspectiva sería que si el equipo o la organización está funcionando en forma no lucrativa y a beneficio de la, del desarrollo físico socio-académico de los niños, pues obviamente podría calificarse bajo el número 2 sin ninguna dificultad.
I'm saying that there would probably be no difficulty in classifying them under class 2 if it's for the socio-academic development of our children.
Right.
And physical development.
I got a question. Okay, as you say, classified to $50, is that per day?
So this is Central's and I want to say per use, so it would be per use.
Yeah, because like a three-month season, that's what I run in softball and a nonprofit organization. I'm a 501(c) nonprofit. What would that be?
So based on their classification, you would fall under number 2 and you would be charged according to the rates in number 2. And they don't, it's not for a specific period of time. I would assume that it would be per event. So each time that you use it, you would be charged 50... Like if you were going to use a classroom, it would be $50 every time you wanted to use a classroom.
But I'm talking about a film.
Pardon?
Like softball film.
Okay, so, but again, this is Central's.
Yes.
So, so is it the... I can't see. So 50, okay, $50 is what they're telling me. So each use, it would cost you $50.
That's a lot of money.
That's exactly why you're here, to give your input.
That means that I won't run a program no more to, the school won't have anything because you guys are charging too much.
So maybe on your survey or even an additional, as we look at recommendations to present to the board, maybe we should come up with a fee for the season. So this is just, so if, so if you know you're going to rent or use the facility, I don't know, 30 times for practice, well, 30 times $50 is a substantial amount of money.
It is.
So maybe if, you know, what's reasonable? You know what, I need it 30 times if I could, you know, pay, I don't know, whatever it is that you deem to be fair and reasonable, what your recommendation is as a community member, then fill out your survey and I would say for the season, I think we should pay 600 bucks, $1,000 for the three-month season. And to use the facility two times a week or, just whatever you feel to be reasonable, then that's exactly why you're here for your input, so we can get your input on that.
Lo que el joven pregunta, sí, sí es gracias. Si, por ejemplo, él maneja una liga de softball para las niñas y él dice que si él tuviese que pagar 50 dólares porque es lo que está en esta clasificación, si él tuviera que pagar 50 dólares por cada vez que use el campo, pues obviamente eso sería, y es una organización no lucrativa, obviamente sería algo, un cobro excesivo para su liga. Y este, la señora Rando me dice que muchas gracias que, por esa pregunta, porque lo que es importante, la aportación de su sugerencia aquí, si tuviese que haber un cobro, ¿cuál sería en su manera de pensar un cobro razonable? A la mejor, no un cobro de por cada vez que se use sino que quizás un cobro a lo largo de una temporada. ¿Verdad? En vez de decir, así lo voy a utilizar 30 veces o, verdad, 35 veces por 50, pues obviamente es mucho dinero. ¿A qué sería un cobro razonable para una temporada para un equipo no lucrativo?
Yeah, I have a suggestion. Maybe if you, you guys should come up with another classification like membership of local leagues. Like a membership called sport.
La sugerencia del señor Ureña es que quizás pudiésemos desarrollar una clasificación más que es, por ejemplo, membresía para ligas locales. Todas estas sugerencias, pues por eso que es importante.
My question, I'm from All Central, reporter for Border Life Magazine. So I think my suggestion, I don't even know, I'm from All Central, I think I should have brought somebody from All Central to answer those questions. I mean, as suggested, I mean, every time we do town hall in All Central, we have somebody there. Our stakeholders are in All Central City Council. As suggested, I mean, you're pointing out All Central High School here.
Just as a point of reference.
Just a point of reference.
Yeah, I'm just sharing with them so that they can see some of the other local or surrounding districts, what they charge. So when we're developing our own fee schedule, then we can kind of take those things into consideration. Not to discuss their, it's not, it's just reference, like this is what they charge. So when we're developing ours, that's why we're having the suggestions to do that for our own.
Esta hoja es solamente un punto de referencia para nosotros ver lo que otras comunidades cobran para utilizar sus instalaciones. Sin embargo, es nada más como un punto de referencia para nosotros porque nosotros aún no hemos desarrollado un precio fijo y esto es para nosotros tomarlo en cuenta con respecto a qué podemos cobrar nosotros.
So again, these are the different fees in the different classifications. So we're going to move on to another district. I think we're going to look at another surrounding district. This is Brawley.
Elementary.
Elementary.
Las primarias de Brawley, la ciudad de Brawley.
Scroll down, down to the second page. And if you go down to page 2 on the back, you can see for Brawley Elementary, they, these are their facilities, their community learning center, their multipurpose room and a classroom. And this is for district cost, nonprofit rate and then the fair rental value for profit rate.
Es que ellos tienen dos precios diferentes para el uso de sus instalaciones que primordialmente es el centro de aprendizaje, el centro de multiusos y los salones de clase. Tienen los costos para los que son no lucrativo versus lo que es los grupos que cobran y que ganan dinero.
And the rates right here are what, per hour as well?
Pardon?
The rates right here are per hour or...
For Central? For Central's, I believe it's per... It's for two hours. Well, and it, so some of them are for use and some of them are per hour or even two hours, like the pool, for example, it says 25... $25 for two hours. But it says labor or custodial services are based on the actual cost of the district. So there are some associated, some different costs that go along with that. Okay? The next school district is Imperial Unified School District.
El Distrito Imperial.
On the second page. Okay? So they also have, these are their, they list their different facilities.
Ow, 50.
The direct cost for nonprofit and then the fair rental value.
Y ellos también tienen, lo tienen dividido entre las organizaciones no lucrativas versus las organizaciones lucrativas.
Right. Did you see the softball lights, $50 an hour? For, where, I can't, in Imperial? And down here softball light, $50 an hour for, that's what Norma just mentioned.
So you can use a field without lights versus with lights.
Right, so you can do it in the daytime or in the, you know, in the dark. Right, so $50 an hour for the lights. Okay? And what's this one? Okay, yeah? Okay, so that was Imperial. Next.
Imperial County Office of Education.
This is, right. This is our county office of education. Okay? Okay, right here. And again, it lists the facilities and then how much the charge.
Y tiene la lista de sus instalaciones y lo que cobran por el uso de cada instalación.
And there's also even a cancellation fee on there. Alrighty, moving on. And thanks to Ms. Toller who sent this information to me. These are some of the fees that are charged by the city of Collexico.
La ciudad de Callexico.
And this was the pool rental and I believe, this was from way back, this was from like five, well, we haven't had a pool for five years, so about six years ago. And these were the fees for the pool, for our, well, it's not that pool but, you know, the old pool.
Esto es lo que se cobraba antes para utilizar la piscina que teníamos antes, no, la actual.
Okay, so pool rental for four hours was $500 and in case of cancel, and if you canceled or whatnot, it was non-refundable. And that was for, again, Friday, Saturday and Sunday. It was available for rental. And again, it would tell you what it came with for six, for a party of 60 to 100, you got four to five lifeguards and then 100 to 200, five to six lifeguards. So that was the fee that was charged six years ago for the rental of our pool. Also, yeah, keep going. In addition to the pool facility, the city has a lot of other facilities that are available for rent and use.
Además de lo que era la alberca o la piscina, la ciudad tiene otras instalaciones que tiene disponibles para rentar.
Right. So you have your...
Parks.
The different parks. Can you keep going down a little bit?
Just to clarify, may I?
Of course, yes.
We don't charge leagues at all. We charge for private parties and we charge for non-registered leagues who will come out from out of town.
You said leagues.
We don't charge leagues at all. We don't charge leagues like softball, baseball. But we do charge for out-of-town leagues who want to come and have a tournament or something in our city.
Okay.
So they get charged. And we also require that local leagues who are running a season, they register, they provide insurance. So there's requirements, we just don't charge them.
You're absolutely, that's kind of my next point is that also and with the fees being charged, a requirement for liability sake, you have to have insurance. That protects you and also protects the school district as well.
And those park rental fees are for private parties.
Yes.
Whatever kind of party, a birthday party, a baby shower or whatever.
Anything, just use of the facility.
Los cobros para las instalaciones bajo la ciudad de Callexico son para organizaciones privadas o para fiestas privadas. Cuando se están tratando de ligas recreativas que son locales, no hay cobro. Siempre y cuando puedan demostrar que tengan aseguranza, liability, eso siempre es lo requerido pero de ahí en fuera no hay cobro para el uso para las ligas recreativas o deportivas. Solamente hay cobro para las ligas fuereñas, las que son de otros lugares que vienen y quieren patrocinar algún evento aquí. Entonces, se le hace un cobro a la liga fuereña para esa actividad.
Mr. Quellis?
Yeah, I was wondering, is there, are there restrooms available at Community Center Park?
If you rent it, there, you get a key for the restrooms outside. They are not open to the public on a regular basis.
But if you rent it, you get the key to the community center?
No, to the restrooms in the back. There are some restrooms in the back.
Oh, there's restrooms in the back, oh, okay.
Pregunta que si, si los baños del community center están disponibles cuando se rentan. La señora Toller dice que sí, que al fondo hay baños para el uso cuando se reta el parque del community center.
I saw a hand appear somewhere else. Was there any other questions or comment? Okay, go ahead, you can just exit of that one.
May I make one more comment?
Of course.
We also require the leagues to help maintain the field because we can't afford to send someone to help me drag it. So they contribute by helping with the maintenance. Otherwise, they just won't work.
Y la, de parte de la ciudad, lo que les piden a las ligas es que ayuden con el mantenimiento de las instalaciones. Como no hay cobro, eso es lo que es parte del trato, por decirlo así.
Thank you, Sandra. Okay, so community input. This is certainly your opportunity to have input on the fees for all of the facilities. So we know our main facilities, you know, our sporting facilities, our classrooms and so on and so forth. So this is your time. I really like the idea of maybe we can do something as a season for the league because bottom line is it's very expensive for the district to maintain those, you know, the facilities. And we have to, after every use, we have to have someone clean it and do all of that. It's, you know, and we want you to have a clean field. And I know you guys want to come onto a clean field, have clean restrooms and those types of things. So it's expensive and we need some support in that area as well as, we want to hear from you. We value your input and that's really why we're here.
Actually, I do take care of some fields for the city and I maintain them pretty good, they're in pretty good condition. And they know, Sandra knows because I borrow them from them. Day in and day out, take care of them, turn on the lights, turn them off at a certain hour, make sure the bathrooms are in working condition and the field should be in a safe, safe condition for the kids.
Thank you.
Este es la oportunidad que tienen para dar sus sugerencias sobre los cobros que podemos hacer con respecto a las instalaciones dentro del Distrito Escolar. Como les digo, tenemos nuestros campos recreativos que son los que más, los que más nos piden pero también tenemos obviamente los salones, los gimnasios, etc. Y ahorita, esta es la oportunidad que ustedes tienen para darnos sus sugerencias a lo que el señor comentó. Aparte es que él ha trabajado bastante con la ciudad de Callexico y él ha ayudado con el mantenimiento de las instalaciones que han estado bajo su cargo durante el tiempo que él ha utilizado esas instalaciones, ya sea con limpieza, mantenimiento de los campos, etc. Correcto?
Make sure that I get it right.
Señor Ureña.
Take the softball league as an example. How much money is the district losing on the two-month season that they're using the field?
How much money is the district losing in the two?
Or investing.
Okay, thank you.
La pregunta es que, ¿qué tanto dinero pierde el Distrito o invierte el Distrito en los dos meses que es la liga, la liga usa el campo?
So minimally, to maintain that area by the time, you know, because someone has to be there to set up and we... And we, because of our union and our negotiations, there's something called callback time. So someone has to be there to close up and typically there's not a shift in. So let's just say we're using Emerson Field and I'll just use that as an example.
Yes, yeah, as I want.
Oh, okay. That we're using Emerson. So someone has to have callback time or at least minimally two hours to clean that facility. Because our softball girls or our students use that field during the day. So someone has to clean, drag the field, you know, do those types of things. Make sure the restrooms are clean, do all of that so that it's ready for use for students in the morning. And then after that, with the normal routine in the day. So on any given day, you think at least two hours minimal overtime plus the supplies plus everything else. So minimally about a hundred and twenty-five dollars a day possibly is what's all-inclusive. Including the utility, the, just everything associated with just for that, a day, one day.
Alrededor de ciento veinte a ciento veinticinco dólares por día por las diferentes cosas que se tiene que aplicar para el mantenimiento del campo. ¿Nuestro Ortega?
Ms. Randall, what was the initial investment the district made to, an example, that is Emerson Field to have it in its current state? What was spent?
La pregunta del señor Ortega es que cuál fue la inversión inicial del distrito escolar con respecto a la presente, la actualidad, la presente condición de Emerson Field, del campo Emerson.
Okay. So the lights themselves were over two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. And all of the renovation and so upwards of a half a million dollars is what was invested in revamping the Emerson Field. So because the lights themselves were over two-hundred-and-fifty thousand.
El campo Emerson donde se juega softball, donde juegan las niñas el softball, se le invertió arribita de doscientos cincuenta mil dólares en lo que son las puras luces. Ya cuando tomamos en cuenta todo lo que se le invertió al campo, estamos hablando casi medio millón de dólares. Si recuerdan, el campo antes estaba en una condición muy distinta a lo que está ahorita. Y fue una inversión significativa la que puso al distrito con respecto a Emerson Field.
And thankfully, there was a lot of work done by our own employees as far as revamping that facility. Because had we contracted out, the majority of that would have cost us probably a whole lot more to do that.
Y solamente nos costó esa cantidad porque mucho del trabajo lo hizo nuestro personal de mantenimiento internamente.
Yes, sir. Mr. Ortega?
Not too long ago, there was a resolution passed, and this is independent from the pool because that still wasn't available, that exempted the current nonprofit organizations, the local nonprofit organizations like the leagues from any fees, correct? Like for the use of that field and so on.
I don't recall there necessarily being a resolution. I know that there was a recommendation of a proposed fee schedule that was brought to the board maybe about a year and a half ago. And at that time, the board took action not to charge for any fees. So it wasn't a formal resolution, but at that time, the board did make, did take action not to charge.
But that's currently what the...
That is correct. Currently, right now for, oh, I'm sorry, sorry, Mary, I'm sorry, sorry.
El señor Ortega hace la pregunta que si ahorita, si no es cierto que ahorita hay una resolución aprobada que indica que a las ligas no lucrativas no se les debe cobrar nada y este, la señora Randall le hace el recordatorio, o que están exentas, le dice que sí hubo una decisión hace año y medio de que no se iba a cobrar, no necesariamente a las ligas, pero que no se iba a cobrar nada a nadie. Pero estamos en una diferente decisión.
Do you guys do a fee waiver to our veterans that have groups out there? Because there's groups out there already, they're hitting all center already, start for every year. We have veterans groups coming from San Diego, Riverside. We have a tournament going on. And that question brought up to my attention recently. Do you guys, with every city in April County would honor our veterans tournaments, you know?
So currently, we don't have a need for a fee waiver because there's no fees. So we don't charge, so the fees are already kind of waived.
Okay.
La pregunta es que si se les cobra a los veteranos, porque también los veteranos tienen ligas y la señora Randall vuelve a recordarles que en este momento no se le cobra nada a nadie. Si es que no hay necesidad para una, una exención para los veteranos en este momento. Norma, ¿qué se va a decir?
Mi punto de vista es de que prioridad se le debería dar a los grupos que existen, que están, que son de Caléxico, de las ligas, de los jóvenes, que ya están establecidos, que ya están conocidos. Y tal vez formular también, como dijo May, un cobro por temporada porque... Pero debe de haber algún costo, no creo necesariamente que debería de ser un costo como los que he visto en otros distritos. Se me hacen excesivos.
She's saying that, that, why don't you just stand there? And you're pleading on me? I'm sorry. She is saying, she is saying that, see, I always rely on you, Norma. She's just saying that.
My point of view is, my point of view is that I don't think we should, I don't think, I think that our priority should be giving to our existing leagues and organizations here in Caléxico. And that we should consider a season fee. But, and that, I do consider that there should be some cost associated.
Not as excessive as...
But not as excessive as what, because it seems excessive to me in some of them. And I've been talking with some people and some of them, it's listed that they charge, but they're not charging what's listed here. So I think everything, we should be flexible with our local community.
As much as we work with the city of Caléxico, we work with the school district to get these kids out of the streets, you know? Girls, boys, whatever it is, you know, just to get them out of the streets. If we start charging an amount of fee, we might, people might not start going anymore because they'll say, well, why is the city or the school district charging so much? You know? I know Jamie's been on that basketball court for so many years and she's got this thing rolling and kids show up all the time. We want, we want to keep that rolling the way it is. But with the big fee, you know, we ain't going to have sooner or later, like we had years back. The high school didn't have a great program. Our programs were like, nobody cared about sports. All of a sudden, we got a bunch of kids playing soccer, a bunch of kids playing softball. Basketball is up there too. You know, you got other programs going on around cheerleading, football. Football went down a lot because they picked up the fees like two-hundred-and-fifty dollars per kid to three-hundred-and-fifty.
Wow.
And that, and that's a lot of money. And then you saw, I saw the effect that's going on. When I used to run pop order, it used to be twenty-five dollars per kid. Twenty-five dollars now went ten times the amount. A lot of kids can't afford that. And we start charging that fee because we need to pay...
You have to pass it on to them. No, and I get it because that big pop order paid a lot of money for a pop order.
It's too, it's too much money for a sport. You know, it's a lot of money and I understand the maintenance of the field has to be done. But it would be a lot easier if the maintenance guy would just go open the door, close it back, make sure. No, because we usually clean everything up, put it in the bag and get it ready for him to take it out. Call him up, close the door, you know, because that's the way it's supposed to be, you know? School district has their own rules, set of rules, a set of rules and we apply to that. We make sure that everything's clean, that nothing's graffiti. And if we see something that wasn't there, we report it, you know? That, that's such style of doing our own things, you know? Because I've done it for so many years. I've been doing this for thirty years. It's like Jamie's been there forever too. I don't know how many years. You know, it's that kind of a thing that we give back to the community without getting paid. If I would get paid for all those years, man, I wouldn't have to be, I'd be retired by now. I enjoy what I do, as much as I enjoy her basketball thing going on and Sandra too. You know, and I got a good group of people that help me out all the time and they're there with me all the time when I'm not there. Somebody's got to be there at the field taking care of, make sure that everything's in order, that people are not damaging your fences or the city's fences, you know? And on those field, I put a brand-new fence, red dirt stuff, I fix the field. You know, when I say I, it's we because my people help me out. And it wasn't a lot of work, you know? It's like I didn't hire nobody to do that job. We did it, we got bulldozers and stuff like that, donations and some of the stuff we had to pay for. I said, where am I going to have money to spend if I need something out there when I have to pay you guys? You know, I understand where you're going through the mains and all the kinds of stuff that we need to do. But I know rules are rules and sometimes we got to follow rules. But I hope it's not too much of an amount when we really need the field to use it.
We always have to follow rules, not sometimes, always. Always, always. But I, but I do appreciate your...
Voy a hacer un resumen muy breve de lo que dijo el señor Íñíguez y es que si se cobra algo excesivo y se va cobrando más y más, obviamente pone en riesgo la participación de los niños de nuestra comunidad en las ligas. Que las responsabilidades primordiales o lo que ellos toman como responsabilidad primordial es número uno tener a los niños activos, sanos y participando en algo positivo fuera de las calles. Verdad, que estén en un lugar sano, salvo y estén creciendo físicamente. Es lo que yo tomé de lo que usted acaba de decir. Y lo que él dice que es que a través de los treinta años o poquito más que él ha estado participando en las ligas recreativas dentro de la ciudad de Caléxico y donde él ha estado participando, él toma muy en serio esa participación. Él y la gente con la que trabaja, los voluntarios, porque todo es voluntario, lo hacen con esa responsabilidad de cuidar las instalaciones que están a su cargo. Y este, pero pues nosotros también tenemos las, los requisitos de que son las, este, las uniones, etc. Y tenemos ciertas liabilities, responsabilidades que tenemos que tener, verdad? Pero sí, obviamente tomamos muy en cuenta y muy en serio el trabajo que hace el señor Íñíguez, la señorita Chu a través de nuestra comunidad, con nuestros niños desde chicos hasta grandes.
I have an idea. What about if the district started a program by adopting a league? For example, you can adopt the softball league by working with them. Let them use the field maybe by a low cost, low costs or something like that. If you are familiar with the major leagues, right? They have the farm system, right? Well, maybe those leagues are going to be the farm system for the district, right? They're going to get the kids to play softball for the district and they're going to win championships. They're going to put the Caléxico High School on the map.
I don't think, well, that's a great idea, great comment. I'm not sure if we can handle it specifically that way. But I think if we can, like you had mentioned before, do a class specifically to leagues that's really reasonably priced, I think we can accomplish the same goal that way. Meaning, you know, it's not too expensive for the league to contribute towards the maintenance and the use of those facilities. And they're still our kids, you know, here locally, Caléxico kids that are playing sports in the league as well as in the school system. So perhaps we can't do it exactly that way, but if we could develop a class specifically for leagues at that lower price, I think the same goal can reach long-term.
La sugerencia que aportó el señor Ureña es que si sería posible que el distrito escolar adoptara uno o dos ligas de niños para, pues, o apoyarlos, ya sea con las instalaciones sin costo o un costo muy bajo, verdad? Y la señora Randall le dice que pues, a lo mejor no es posible que lo hagamos de esa manera, pero sí de la manera en que se desarrolle como él también había sugerido anteriormente en su primera sugerencia aportada de que se dé una columna para las organizaciones locales a un costo obviamente más bajo al que pues, por temporada.
Can I just add a little quick? It's not, it's not about winning championships, okay? It's not, to me, it's not that. I see most, most of the girls and the little kids, the boys that participate, because I got a group of three-to-five-year-olds, which is called Peach Coast T-Ball. The GPA is really high. That, I always tell them, sports is not the way, it's your education. But they seem to like, they challenge themselves more because they play the sport. And I see most of the kids that graduated now, when they started with me, like ten, twelve years ago, when I started the league, those kids been, their GPA, like I said, they're like three, five, almost in the fours. And they're great students. And that's, that's what matters to me more, the education. If they keep on playing the sport since we had, some girls, they got scholarships out of this. It's great, we never had that before. And to me, that's important.
Dice el señor Íñíguez que esto no es que se trate de ganar los campeonatos, sino que ver el resultado principal que es el rendimiento académico de los niños en las escuelas. Que por lo general, los niños que participan en las actividades de este tipo son los niños que tienen los mejores promedios en las escuelas. A través del tiempo hemos tenido niños que salen de la prepa de Caléxico y logran obtener becas, becas a raíz de su desarrollo académico a través de los años.
Any other questions, comments? Preguntas, no? Varios sugerencias? So, okay, so this is the survey, but let me share with you before we go on to the survey. And again, that's the, not the website, but the link, there it is. Okay, that's, that's the link for the survey. So I'm going to share with you once you take your survey. And you can share this with others too if they want to go on and take the survey. Our goal is, and hopefully they can take it prior to next Tuesday. Our goal is to share all of the survey results with the board at the upcoming meeting, which is next Thursday.
Pedimos que tomen la encuesta, la pueden hacer hoy, o también compartirla con, verdad, compañeros amigos. La meta es que, si no la hacen hoy, que la hagan antes del martes porque nuestra meta es compartir los resultados de la encuesta con la Mesa Directiva en nuestra, en su próxima reunión, que es el próximo jueves.
What date is that? Tuesday is... No. Thursday's meeting is... Oh, Thursday's meeting is the thirteenth.
Martes, perdón, jueves trece de octubre. La próxima junta de la Mesa Directiva y nuestra meta es presentarles a los miembros de nuestra Mesa Directiva los resultados de la encuesta que ustedes o sus compañeros, vecinos tomen.
And if you want to take the survey here at the district tonight, if you don't have access to internet, there are some computers that you can borrow here. And any of your comments, suggestions, please put it all in the survey because we're going to compile all that information and give it to the board on Thursday. And so then, and it may not be something they'll take action on on Thursday, but for discussion and then we'll kind of see where we're moving forward.
Y si no, si no tienen acceso a la computadora o al internet fuera de aquí, pues pueden tomar, si pueden tomar el tiempo de hacer la encuesta aquí en la computadora, hemos proporcionado computadoras para que lo hagan. De nuevo, lo pueden hacer en su casa, ahí está el link. Y este, por favor, si nos hacen el favor de someterlo no más tarde del martes para poder nosotros darles a la Mesa Directiva sus sugerencias.
And if you, and we, this meeting is scheduled till seven-thirty. So if you'd like to stay and work on the survey and sit here, we're here till seven-thirty. So you're welcome to stay. And I think that's it. Thank you all very much for coming. Thank you.
Muchas gracias. Gracias por sus atenciones y...
Thank you for the visit.
Pues salen de trabajar, yo creo que...